We'll reconvene the meeting with the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the May 7th meeting, the CPSC and CSE recommendations, personnel action items, and the financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Barbara, Teresa, are there any questions or comments on any items in the consent agenda? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. And now we move down to information items, curriculum and instruction. Damian?
Thank you very much. I'll start off with a couple of textbooks for your information. They're both from the History Alive series, and they will be used at the middle school. The first is History Alive: The United States Through Modern Times by Diane Hart et al. for use in grade seven and eight social studies. And the second is the History Alive title, The Ancient World by Wendy Frey et al., also, well, to be used by sixth grade social studies at Farnsworth Middle School. And I'm very pleased to announce that one of our teachers has been recognized for the No Barriers USA in Wells Fargo, by the Wells Fargo and Company, who announced the selection of 20 middle and high school educators who will serve as project leaders for the Third Annual Global Impact Project. Congratulations to Gilderlin High School teacher Olivia Chadwick, who goes by Libby, who was selected for the 2019 Global Impact Challenge. The diversity and inclusion competition is designed to spark the best ideas from students for building a world free of barriers, stereotypes, and discrimination. This is now in its third year, and the goal of the challenge is to equip a greater number of teachers and students with the tools necessary to dream big and break down barriers in our communities. Olivia will attend a training program as part of the No Barrier Summit in Lake Tahoe, California, in June. She will create a team of students with mixed abilities and backgrounds who will develop and fine tune their ideas over the course of a six-week workshop. She will present her team's solutions to a volunteer selection committee with expertise in the field of diversity and inclusion in December of 2019. And finalists will be awarded up to $5,000 to launch their Global Impact Challenge projects in their communities, and given the opportunity to attend the 2020 No Barrier Summit in San Francisco to present their projects. And there is a link, I'll have to, I thought it was included in the update, but I'll send it out to all of you as well, that features Libby on the website for the challenge. And my third item, we have a team of middle school students who we want to congratulate. They represented Farnsworth Middle School at the New York State History Day on April 29th. Eighth graders Pratham and Purnashkar with the documentary about Valley Forge, sixth grader Ajahn Kumetha with an exhibit on Eleanor Roosevelt, sixth grader Shreya Mudavangatil Sajjan with an exhibit on Nelson Mandela, and sixth grader Jane Fanning with the documentary on the Triangle Shirtwaist Fire. Of the four projects that went representing FMS, Jane Fanning's documentary, A Blaze for Workers' Rights, the Triangle Shirtwaist Factory Fire placed first in the junior documentary division, and Jane will be presenting her project at the national competition in June. My next item is really an invitation for all of you and for the community. I'd like to invite you to our annual E=MC2 at symposium. It will be held on Thursday, June 13th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium. And if you've been in the past, these are TED Talk-style presentations that are a culmination of a year-long study for each of our 10 students. There is no admission, it's open to the public, and it is always an enlightening experience. If you haven't been able to attend in the past, I definitely recommend it. So please join us as we celebrate these young thinkers. And congratulations to ninth graders Megan Bupati and Serena Gurang, who were awarded first place in the junior division of the STEAM Expo held on May 18th. Their project was about a rhythmogenic right ventricular cardiomyopathy, or ARVC, which is a form of heart disease in which myocardium breaks down, increasing the risk of abnormal heartbeat and sudden death. Certainly sounds very, very complex and sophisticated, so we extend congratulations to them as well. And we have students from around the capital region who participate in the Capital Region BOSI's program for career and technical skills. They demonstrated their career and technical skills at the New York State Skills USA competition, which was held in Syracuse, New York, on April 25th and 26th. One of our students, Angelo Carino, was featured and took second place in the food prep assistant category. And we want to congratulate him, and I also have a link for this that I will send to you as well. And high school English teacher Chris Missouri has been recently appointed to serve on the executive board of the New York State English Council. We want to congratulate him and wish him well in his endeavors with the council. And lastly, just some curricular updates. The Schenectady County Community College has approved Gilderlin High School's social studies teacher Kristen Knapp to teach U.S. government and politics. This is a three-credit hour college course that will start this fall. This brings our SEC C offerings to three social studies courses and three ELA courses. When combined with one social studies course through HBCC, students can earn at least 21 credit hours between social studies and English language arts, not including any advanced placement or Supa courses as well. So I want to thank the English and Social Studies Departments for their work and their efforts to bring forth college credit-bearing courses to our students. And I'm Mossad.
Thank you, Damian. Lots of good news this evening. Just wondering, with the No Barriers Youth, Wells Fargo selected the 20 teachers, so that's 20 teachers nationally?
Nationally, yeah.
Do you know what the selection criteria was, or how?
I have, I'm gonna send you the website, and it does spell it out on the website. And I have it in front of me, but I don't wanna sit here and search for too long, but it is on the website.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, thank you for reporting all of this. And now we moved, yes, Barbara?
Damian, the availability of these college courses is absolutely phenomenal. Can you share with us what the average cost is to the students?
For the community, Mike, do you happen to know the cost for the community college tuition? I don't know, I'll get it for you. I don't know off the top of my head. It's less expensive than actually attending there, I know that for sure.
Right. I remember my daughter took one of these courses many, many years ago, and it was a phenomenal price.
Yeah, it's definitely at a discounted rate.
I think it's around $30, $35 a credit hour.
A credit.
Wow.
Yes, Ben?
I just wanted to note that the Cal Region STEAM Expo, this was its fourth year, and that Gilderlin students have taken first-place prizes at three of the years. And it's a growing event, and I hope we can stay participating in the future.
Thank you, Ben. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we will move to superintendent information. Maury?
I only have one item tonight, but it's a big item. As you know, last Tuesday, our community supported both our 2019-20 budget, our Capitol Project Bond referendum, our bus proposition, and elected three members to our Board of Education. Thank you, as I said earlier, "thank you" was not big enough to say how much we appreciate the support of our community. We were asking a lot, and we were over 60% on each of those propositions. So just to our community, thank you so much for believing in our schools and for the future of our schools. So it's just huge. A ton of work went into that. I need to recognize Linda Livingston and Neil Sanders for all the work that goes into putting together the vote process itself. I don't think we can underestimate just how much goes into that, because it is a lot of work. I also have to recognize Cliff Noonie, whose sheer determination and persistence, I think, is a huge part of the reason why our Capitol Project was approved, and now good work can begin. So I also want to take this opportunity to congratulate Barbara and Gloria, and newcomer Kelly Person, who will be beginning new terms on July 1st. And welcome back, and welcome to Kelly. We're looking forward to a great year ahead of us. We also, just so you know, we conducted an exit survey during the school budget vote last week, and the purpose of the study is to collect demographic data about who voted and why they voted the way they did. We don't have results yet, but we do know that the percentage of participation in our exit poll was quite a bit lower this year than it has been in the past. We hovered around 30% of voters participating this year. It was about 20% who participated. The flip side of that is we had more voters, so we'll have to sort through what all of that means. So as part of all this, I also want to thank Aubrey Kamler, our communications specialist, who really was all over the postcard, the newsletter, the web postings, the Facebook posts, to get people out, remind them to vote, and to have them have access to good information about what we were doing. So congratulations to everyone who played a part, and of course, to the Board of Education, who lived this process back from October on, and we couldn't do it without you. So thank you.
Okay, and now we move to board president information items. There's two this evening, and the first is the proposed 2019-20 Board of Education meeting dates, which you have in front of you on the computer. If there's any discussion on them now, or you can just take a look at them, and if there's any issues, let us know. But they're presented this evening for discussion, so. Does anyone have anything?
Do we vote on them next time? Do we have one more meeting in June?
We don't vote on them until the organizational meeting.
Oh, okay.
So we actually put them out early, so we can figure out if there are any conflicts.
I will be here for the July 2nd?
July 2nd, okay.
Okay. The next item is the Board of Education Student Awards and Other End-of-Year Ceremonies. So also in front of you is the list of ceremonies that will be taking place and the individuals who are able to attend. Are there any questions or comments or discussion on all of these activities that will be coming up in the next couple of weeks? It's a big list here. Hi. And now we will move to action items, school business management action. Neil?
Thank you. First up this evening is the Resolution and Declaration showing tabulation of votes cast at the annual budget vote and election meeting of the Gilderlin Central School District on May 21st, 2019, and declaring the results of the ballots. As Maria indicated, all of our propositions passed by a percentage of 60, over 60%. I'll give you the numbers. For the budget, we had 2,705 yes votes, 1,414 no votes, 1,414 no votes, excuse me. For the bus purchase, we had 2,728 yes votes and 1,352 no votes. And for the Capitol Construction Project, we had 2,489 yes votes and 1,514 no votes. For the Board of Education candidates, Kelly Person received 2,874 votes, Gloria Toalhilt received 2,844 votes, and Barbara Frederico received 2,743 votes.
Neil, may I have a motion to approve the resolution? Judy, second. Seema, questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
The next item is bond resolution authorizing the purchase of various school buses, vehicles, and equipment, and this is a roll call vote. So what we have is voters had authorized up to $939,400 to be borrowed for the purchase of nine replacement school buses.
May I have a motion to approve the bond resolution? Judy, second. Gloria, any questions or comments? Okay, this is a roll call.
This is Frederico.
Yes.
This is Jito.
Yes.
Mr. Goz.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Dr. Rivera.
Yes.
Ms. Slack.
Yes.
Ms. Toalhilt.
Yes.
Our next item is the bond resolution for the school district Capitol Construction Bond, and again, this is a roll call vote. This is, authorizes the borrowing of $27,560,000, and that's out of a total of $30,926,000. Part of that's being paid for from capital reserve and then fund balance. So the resolution is for the amount to be bonded of just over $27.5 million.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution for the Capitol Construction Bond? Teresa, second. Barbara, any questions or comments? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
This is Frederico.
Yes.
This is Jito.
Yes.
And Mr. Goz.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Dr. Rivera.
Yes.
Ms. Slack.
Yes.
Yes.
And then we have another bond resolution for the Gilderlin Public Library Construction Bond. Again, this is a roll call vote, this is the last one of the evening. And similar to the school district, total project cost is 8.35 million. The resolution will authorize a maximum borrowing of $6.95 million, again, through the fund balance and the capital reserve that the library had.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution for the Library Capitol Construction Bond? Gloria, second. Judy, are there any questions or comments on this one? Okay, roll call.
This is Frederico.
Yes.
This is Jito.
Yes.
Mr. Goz.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Dr. Rivera.
Yes.
Ms. Slack.
Yes.
Yes.
Next is a resolution to approve three service agreements, one with Needham Risk Management Resource Group, LLC, one with Oak Hill School, and one with Signet Education, LLC.
May I have a motion to approve the service agreements? Barbara, second. Seema, are there any questions or comments on any of these agreements? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next is a resolution to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement with Omni Partners. This is a part of a cooperative that we were currently in, U.S. Communities, that got acquired by a larger cooperative, which is Omni Partners. So this resolution will just allow us to have access to that broader array of services and goods.
May I have a motion to approve the cooperative purchasing agreement? Gloria, second. Barbara, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
And then finally this evening is a resolution to approve the engagement letter confirming the understanding of all the new services to be provided by Weston Company CPAS PC for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019.
May I have a motion to approve the agreement? Judy, second. Gloria, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Thank you, Neil. And now we move to board president action items. We have the policies that were presented at the last meeting for our first read up for approval now. May I have a motion to approve the policies? Barbara, second. Judy, are there any questions or comments on any of these?
Christine?
Yes, Ben?
Two things. One, to make it official, on the Internet and hardware regulation, we removed the words "New York State" and "United States," because the sentence said state laws and federal laws of New York State and the United States, and that sounded redundant. It doesn't change the substance of the policy, but I just wanted to mention that the document's been updated. And then the other thing I wanted to ask was for us to separate out the acceptable use policy, that those regulations stem from 4510.2.
Okay, you want to vote on the acceptable use policy separately?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll pull that one aside.
Do we need another motion for that?
I would say yes, we should.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the policies with the exception of the Internet and Computer Acceptable Use Policy, which is 4510.2? It's item C. Seema, second. Teresa, are there any questions or comments? Gloria, do you have?
No, C and D, I'm trying to figure out what the, okay.
What is the regulation?
I see the difference, yeah. I got, yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. And now may, I have a motion to approve the Internet and Computer Acceptable Use Policy. Barbara, second. Judy, are there any questions or comments on this one? Ben?
Yeah, so the reason I wanted to separate this out was, there's a line in here that says access to computers in school may be revoked at any time. If you violate these policies, that's actually a change in language from the previous policy, which said it something like, "the privilege of using computers in school may be revoked at any time." And, you know, the reason we changed that language, and the more I reflect on this, you know, in 2019, to deny a student the use of computers in school is to deny them an education, essentially. We've moved to one-to-one Chromebooks, we have Wi-Fi in the schools for bringing your own device, and kids need to be prepared for the world when they leave school. And so I'm uncomfortable with that particular language, that's why I wanted to separate it out. Because I really don't think, I think that there can be discipline, I agree with the following sentence in that paragraph, but I don't think, I don't think we should be denying students' use of technology.
Do you want to offer an alternative, an amendment to what's currently written here?
I would just strike that sentence, the following sentence says that there can be discipline for misusing our technology and for violating these regulations. But...
You could put, you could put that in, and then put something like "up to and including" revocation of use of, or access to the computers? Would you be comfortable with something like that?
Maybe if we said something like, "in extreme circumstances," I don't know, I mean, even that allows for the possibility of just revoking access. And I think no matter what we do, we have to allow some access.
I think the last, I agree with Ben on this. I do agree that maybe that last sentence is enough, and then it leaves it, you know, the word appropriate, depending on what the violation was.
Right, there could be a case where there's a safety issue.
Exactly, exactly.
Ben?
I mean, that last sentence is vague enough to be involved in all that, so I'm okay with that, too.
Barbara?
I think, Ben, why that word "may" was there was for those rare but very serious offenses. And so in that particular situation, be it a cyberbullying-type situation, or a pornography incident, or whatever, I think that's why we use the word "may." I'd be comfortable using Christine's language, you know, starting with that second sentence, but I'm almost reluctant to say that we can never do that, if you have a certain...
But I think Ben's point is, you know, as we move into the 20, further into the 21st century, the computer becomes...
Available everywhere.
I mean, it's like taking textbooks away. I mean, you take the computer away, you take access to the education. And I would think appropriate discipline would be, you know, some sort of a monitoring of the computer and somehow, or blocking things put onto it, or an adult, you know, monitoring.
Reconciliation.
Yeah.
Right.
But that's why I think the word "appropriate" is, but not to say, you know, take it away, because that's taking away their access to education.
Why don't we...
Take a suggestion for this. Rather than saying revoked, maybe use the word restricted. So if, for example, a student does, you know, some egregious act on technology, cyberbullying or the like, rather than just go straight to revocation, we can establish accounts that are significantly restricted.
Cyberbullying, yeah.
Cannot be, you know, socially communicating with other students, those types of things can happen. You know, I think revoking the, I can't think of the last time that we've really revoked technology from a student, but we've certainly restricted it with students who have done some of those types of acts. So I think, you know, I do agree conceptually with Ben's point. I think it makes, makes great sense, and he raises a great point with that. But I think, you know, inevitably, there are going to be cases where we do have to restrict the technology.
Right.
Whether it's access to certain accounts or programs or what have you.
That makes sense.
That makes sense.
Ben, are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that. I still don't see why that can't fit underneath the second sentence, but I like that better than before.
So do we need a motion then to amend, approve the amendment?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the policy as amended?
Read the amendment that you stated, that was a good one.
Will be access to computers in school may be restricted at any time if a staff member or student fails to comply with district policy and regulations. Barbara will make the motion. Ben, do you want a second?
I'll second, but I also have a comment, though.
Okay.
I mean, I think even that is too loose for me to be comfortable with, because it says "at any time," and I think that there needs to be a formal discipline charge and process before we do something like that. You know, I don't think some teacher or administrator should just be able to turn off someone's, you know, access to the Internet or something. You know, what that says is, "oh, we saw you violate, we saw you on a library computer looking at this instead of that, and so we turned off your computer." You know, I still think, again, that that second sentence is much better, because it takes away that kind of element of, "do I get to use computers in school, or don't I?"
What about removing "at any time"?
We're blending it with the last sentence, so to say appropriate disciplinary action, including potential restriction of use of technology, computers in school will be taken in the event of violations of this policy, something like that.
I like that one.
Okay.
Wordsmith?
So...
Withdraw our motion.
Yeah, we'll withdraw the motion. I'll ask for a motion to approve the policy as amended.
Stated by Damian.
Barbara, second. Judy?
I didn't write it down.
But I will rely upon Damian or...
Linda's got it. Linda's got it.
Rewind the video table.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes seven zero. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Damian. Thank you, everyone. Okay, now we move to board committee reports, audit.
Our next meeting is June 13th at 8:15.
Okay. Business practices?
We will be meeting in the fall.
So we're not meeting in the summer? I thought that's the one meeting that we were supposed to meet on the 13th was...
We don't know for sure. So I'm saying the fall, that would be normal, but if something, if the group comes to us with something before then.
I wanted to attend that, and I wouldn't be on the board, so I wanted to...
The group's will come right to you.
Open.
Okay. Make sure you get notice.
Thank you. Communications, Sean is not here. Is there anybody else that can provide an update?
We're meeting on June 7th, 3:00 o'clock.
Okay. And Policy Committee, Barbara?
We'll shoot for one more meeting this season, sometime in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. And then we, public comment number two, Linda, has anybody signed up? Okay. And now we move to board issues, ideas, and sharing. Seema, I believe you had an issue that you wanted to raise?
I just wanted to talk about the emails that were going, being exchanged before, and I guess how we're addressing that, right before the meeting, from the parent, I think who spoke a couple of times at public comment.
Related to?
Related to, I guess, the district's response in terms of being inclusive and issues of diversity, et cetera.
Okay. Maury or Damian, do one of you want to speak to some of the things that the district is doing in response to the comments that we received at...
Sure. I mean, I saw the email literally during our ceremony here tonight, and I think the gist of it was she was bothered by the fact that it wasn't reflected in the minutes of the board meeting from that evening. So right after the meeting when she spoke last time, I had a really good conversation with her, and invited her to our next Social Studies Cabinet meeting, which is on Friday this week. So she'll be joining our Social Studies Cabinet to kind of share her perspectives and, you know, think together with us about how we can address some of the concerns that she brought forth. She does have some very legitimate concerns, there's no question about that, and I don't think anyone disputes that at all. We started this year with the middle school in particular...
We started this year with the middle school in particular, professional development around being culturally responsive and inclusive, and we're going to continue that into next year. That is actually the focus of our Leadership Retreat over the summer. So, we're working with Dr. Stacy Williams from Maris College, who will be coming in. She'll be working directly with the administrative team from all of our schools in the district for a day and a half to really, I think, bring a greater level of awareness and understanding to that group. We'll continue with that work throughout next year and beyond as well. You know, I know Lynn and I have chatted about hiring practices and trying to get more diversity within our staff. It's tough to do, I'll be honest with you. It's one of the things that we hope for with our job fair reach here, is that we're going to be drawing from throughout the region, throughout the state, as far and wide as we possibly can. We don't have a great amount of diversity coming to us and applying for positions here, which makes it challenging. So, I mean, that, those are the things that are in the works right now, and I'm looking forward to meeting with her on Friday and having some more conversation with her.
And then, after the retreat of the administrators and the workshops with the rest of the staff, is it possible to continue to provide updates on kind of what's coming out of those and what actions we're doing following those? Because I think it's great that we have these days and these retreats, but I want to make sure that it's not just a day, and it's not just a treat. It's actually being worked into the day-to-day here in the schools.
Right. There's a lot of work to do there, and I think, you know, a lot of it has to do with making sure that we have culturally responsive materials and resources and texts and all those kinds of things that our teachers have access to as well. So, it's, it's a work in progress. I don't think we're quite there yet, but we're certainly working toward that.
I don't mean to cut that short, I just have another, okay. And I wrote this down so I could get all, I was happy that I could attend the 16th Annual Awards Banquet of the Academy for Character Education, where two members of the Gilderlin Community were recognized. One of the four awards for student leadership champion of character went to Maxine Albert, Alperk, excuse me, of FMS, who was recognized as a peer leader for sources of strength. She was honored for being insightful, hardworking, and a role model for others while learning to be a leader among classmates. An outstanding student leader, she is making a positive, shining, indelible impression. And then, also recognized was Marie Wiles, who received the Educational Leadership Champion of Character Award. Marie is passionate about, this is what was said, I mean, we know this, but Marie is passionate about her work in education and sees the mission of public schools to make sure all students are ready for the future that awaits them. She devotes considerable time to helping develop leaders with the courage to do what it takes to make that happen. So, it was a very nice night for Gilderlin.
And I'm sure you hate me for saying that. You're in deep weeds right now. But thank you, it was a great time. Any other? Yes, Barbara?
Just to follow up on our late school start study, and if maybe next month, we could sort of get an update. We are doing the transportation study, right? Through the transit company?
We are, but the consultant that we had planned to work with took seriously ill, so we have to find someone else who can help us. And we're in the process of working through that right now. Very seriously ill, and we'll just leave it at that. So, it's still on the radar. Now that the budget is behind us, we can pick up the pieces of all the other things we're working on. I will, we can do an update at the June Board Meeting, just to let everyone know kind of where we stand. By then, we should know who we'll be working with and have some more information.
And what a wonderful thing it was to see Alicia here tonight, and to have the Linwood staff come out anyway, not knowing she was going to be here, but in support. And then, to be able to watch their reactions to having her here and her reaction to them was very moving. And a great thank you to Alicia. I'm sure getting it together is very difficult, so.
Yes, Ben?
I'd just like to bring up and keep on people's radar that, you know, because we declined to budget for a consultant provisioning this upcoming year, it kind of falls to us to shape that process. And so, you know, I don't think we plan to start that in June. We have so many events and stuff. But we might want to start that in the summer, when we have more time. And so, I mean, especially as you look at that organizational calendar that we're going to vote on, maybe start thinking about any ideas you might have of what that process will look like, whether to reconvene the Visioning Committee or have a slot at every board meeting where we talk about visioning, or what. But that's something that we decided to take on for ourselves, and so, we should be thinking about that.
Thank you for that, it's a good point. Seema?
I just have a process question. Are we meeting after, like, technically, the evaluation? All that stuff is done by the 31st? Do we have to schedule a meeting in June for all of us to meet?
I think that's an item that we'll discuss in executive session at our next Board Meeting, which is on June 11th.
Okay, so it's after that, huh? Okay.
And then, after that meeting, we'll decide what our next steps are. But yes, we'll probably need another meeting in late June or early July. It could even be the reorganizational meeting, which is July 2nd, although I know Gloria said she's not going to be here, so. But yes, sometime after the June 11th meeting.
I'm just thinking about scheduling, that's all, because it's like crazy time.
Okay. Is it possible to maybe send out a doodle poll for, June is tough with all the other events that we have. It doesn't have to be a Tuesday night, but after the June 11th meeting, the Board will need time to meet with Marie to discuss. So, sometime between June 11th and, I guess, the beginning of July, before people start to go away.